You are listening to the Lone Star Community Radio on 104.5 KCZW LP Conroe and 106.1 KZCLP Conroe and worldwide on IRloneStar.com.
Yes, it's Wednesday morning, we're listening to Ezra Charles and the words. Good morning Montgomery County, it is Wednesday morning and it is hopping. That is my boogie woogie tagline music and I love it. And I've got a guest, camera, don't go on her yet, stay off. Don't, we don't know how that'll be taken on Facebook, but she has got some jamming looking face expressions going on right now. I don't think Jake, I don't think we've ever had a guest that either the feet weren't tapping, the body, the boogie woogie, and some of them were actually standing up. Has anybody ever just sat there going?
Ezra Charles, I mean, it's, it's a classic legend. It gets me going when I edit your show too.
Even the one young lady here that was going, well, it is kind of older type of music. She said that, but her head was bobbing. So you know what, whatever little girl, go away little girl. Okay, no singing today. I am not going to be as wild as I was last week. Last Wednesday, I was stupid. We were off the chain. We had Shawn Johnson in here, the city of Conroe. Oh my Lord, we were just, we were on fire. For all you Spanish speakers out there, in fuego baby, in fuego. And we were cutting up and silly, so go back, go to YouTube, go to Montgomery County Lifestyle YouTube page and find that show with Shawn and I. First of all, Shawn Johnson's wonderful, I love her. Her and her husband do so much behind the scenes for, for the community. Jermaine does so much for kids, so much for kids, any kid, kid with money, kid with no money, but yes, he does focus in on a lot of the kids that don't have some of the economic opportunities that other ones do. But Shawn with the city of Conroe, this bus, this future, um, um, what do you call it? Parking ride into Houston, that's her baby, her brainchild. And I know I was talking to one person one time who kind of was with local media and stuff and kind of didn't feel that we really needed a bus. Okay, if 80 to 90 cents of every dollar spent is federal and state money, back off. There's a lot of people, I've seen people, I know people that get to the hospital, get to Lone Star Community, their family, you know, Lone Star Family, Lone Star, what is it, Lone Star Family Health. There you go, thank you, I'm losing my mind. I've seen people get jobs, get to Walmart, it's cool. So go check that out. And then we had Paulina on here and we had trade dealer of Inspired Productions, Texas Taco Margarita Festival. There's a lot going on in this community and I gotta thank you, people out there for sharing these shows and sharing when I say, hey, tune in in 15 minutes and, and you're sharing it and people are seeing it. And I've got people reaching out to me that, that have great stories and they want to be on the radio and they want to tell their story, or they want to tell their friend's story, or they have a friend who's running a nonprofit, or they have a friend who has a business and they think they deserve some publicity. That's what Montgomery County Lifestyle with Nathan Arzadi, radio and TV is about. I'm lucky, I get to be the face and the voice, but you are lucky because you get good content. So if you want to be on the show, send me a message. Call me. If you've got a friend or you've got an idea, hey man, holler at me. elected officials, y'all can come on. I got Phil Cash Constable coming on pretty soon. I got Judge Claudia Laird coming on Friday. Uh, I'm so excited that in a couple of weeks, in the next two weeks, there are some people who are announcing their candidacy for positions in Montgomery County, right here baby, announcements coming to you live. Jake, would that be called a world premiere since we're worldwide on IRloneStar.com? That's a world premiere, isn't it?
I think technically yes, yes, technically yes, that would be considered a world premiere.
So if somebody's coming on here and they're gonna go, I'm running for, or I'm running for, that's a world premiere?
Yeah, cuz we're a worldwide broadcasting studio.
And we're TV.
Yeah.
Channel 12, Southern Link.
Yeah.
YouTube video goes worldwide, archived forever.
SoundCloud, or not SoundCloud, sorry, Google Play and iTunes.
And iTunes, so do I need to get a red carpet in here maybe? And paparazzi?
We can get a little strobe going or something.
Yeah, maybe we can get, you know, Andy Dubois and Catherine Dominguez of the, you know, courier to come hang out and see what's going on.
I mean, we'll have to approve it by Dick, but yeah, I don't see why you look at it.
I don't have to prove anything, that's public out there. We're gonna have, we're gonna have paparazzi out there going, who is it, who is it? We're gonna have to sneak them in the back door.
We don't have a back door?
Conroe Coffee does. Oh, now they're gonna be camped out back there.
Yep.
Cuz you know, we're gonna, you know, that little short guy with the beard with the receding hairline, you know that guy? That ghost rider for that blog down at the Woodlands? He's gonna be hiding out there in his car. He's gonna be hiding, I don't know his name, I need to know his name, I'll call him out. He's a ghost rider.
Short guy with a beard.
Come on, short guy with a beard with the receding hairline, woo, Mr. Artsy Fartsy Guy. I mean, come on, when you're a ghost rider and you're, you know, talking smack on one of those crazy blogs, you gotta be called out, right? Cool. All right, folks, man, there's so much going on. We're gonna go ahead and take our break right now. I'm not gonna hold back because my guest today, I'm gonna go and tell you now, it's Melanie Bush, CISD Board of Trustees, business owner, mentor to people. This is the kind of story that we want, so if you're out there going, will I do that too? Call me, you can come on here too. Uh, but we're gonna find out a lot that's going on with CST, it's real important. They just had a really, really big meeting and a lot of incredible things were done. And let's face it, our future is our youth and that's what it's all about. So you're listening to Montgomery County Lifestyle with Nathan Arzadi, Melanie Bush will be on here on Lone Star Community Radio, your community radio, we'll be right back.
Don't miss Lone Star Community Radio on TV and YouTube. Our talk show and music shows are featured on our city TV, Southern Link Channel 12, and have their own YouTube channel. Make sure to subscribe to keep up with posted shows and comment on them below the video.
Alrighty Montgomery County, here's what I forgot to tell you. Good morning and thank you for listening, Splendora, Tamina, The Woodlands, Magnolia, Montgomery, Willis, New Waverly, Cut and Shoot, uh, Cleveland, and of course worldwide. Everybody in Montgomery County, that's what this show is about. This show is about Montgomery County. Yeah, Eric Estes, I'm losing my mind. Do you have a problem with that? Okay, come on, I haven't seen you on the show yet, I haven't seen you at the door. If y'all don't know who Eric Estes is, he is probably the craziest, goofiest, funniest, and most gracious supporter of mine. He watches and listens every day and if he can't, he sends me a message and says, I slept late because I'm old and my body doesn't move very well, you know? And, you know, he had some issues. I said, what were the issues? He said, depends. I said, depends on what? He goes, no, I ran out of depends. So anyway, all right, folks, that's the kind of day I'm having right now. Let's dive right in. Melanie Bush, CISD Board of Trustees and many other things, welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me Nathan.
Hey, it's good to have you, I haven't seen you in a while.
I know.
So here's what we're gonna do, let's back up and tell the listeners a little bit about yourself, starting from where you're from, all the way up to today.
I grew up mainly in the Garland area, that's where my mom still lives today. I spent five years in North Carolina in Durham when she got remarried at a phase and I would say that was probably the best five years of my youth.
Why?
Um, that's when I got saved.
Ah.
So I had a wonderful best friend who was a PK, preacher's kid, and she brought some faith into my life, but in addition to that, I had a seventh grade algebra teacher that just really lived her faith.
Wow.
And spoke volumes to me. And so that was when God got a hold of my life and got a hold of my heart, so.
How old were you?
Thirteen.
So you hadn't really, I mean, by all means not taken away, but it's not like you were 20 years old and, you know, doing all kinds of bad things that you had to, but, but what better way to have that beginning?
Yeah.
Me, Liberty Texas, my dad was driving by and my brother and I were with him and we went to a James Robinson Crusade. We were seven years old and yes, I look back and I do know what we did when we accepted Christ, but it also several years later built back in, got reaffirmed so to speak and, and learned more, but God knows I have gone way off track many times.
I, I did as well.
But it's so easy to come back when you have it at a young age.
Exactly, exactly. I, I wish that I had the faith that my kids have, you know, they have grown up in the church, I didn't. And my 12-year-old's faith is amazing and I, I love that about her.
There's so, I'm seeing that more and I never was blessed with kids. I think that's why I like doing things in the community where the kids and that's how Boudreaux was born. But it's really cool to see recently, some of the kids that I felt like, you know, and we hear say our youth is going to heck in a handbasket, I don't think so.
Disagree strongly.
Well, I think the problem between social media and media, I think we just talk about the negative too much. I think we're missing that it's out there, we just need to go talk to it and touch it.
Oh, so very much. All you hear about on the news and on social media is, is the bad and you, you definitely see that we have, you know, the young lady that was just convicted and the bullying and getting her boyfriend to commit suicide and, and that is an atrocity that should never occur. Um, but we talk more about that than we talk about the kids that are standing up to the bullies for someone else. And that's, that's what I see when I'm on campus and I'm in the schools and CISD, I see all these amazing kids, they are so compassionate and have such an amazing heart for each other and for our world. And I still say, this next generation coming up that just graduated in the most recent years and that's coming are some of our best that we've ever had.
Well, it's amazing too cuz, you know, people like Cindy Hawkins and, and, and Tara Trevino and some of the people, Amanda Bond from the Golden Girls and then some of the cheerleaders and the cheerleader of mine, Gwen Pryor and them, cuz I take pictures of a lot of the CISD games and stuff and so I got to know them. And it's really cool to see some of those kids that are so good with each other, with the younger kids. And yeah, they're, they're teenagers, okay, so they're not always gonna be perfect, but they're pretty stinking good.
Well, but none of us are perfect.
But they're.
If we were perfect, we wouldn't need a Savior.
Yeah.
I mean, none of us are perfect. We all grow up as adults and we, we have a phrase in my business, we call those learning opportunities.
Yeah.
Um, everybody makes mistakes and it's whether or not you choose to learn from them or you choose to stay mired in the self doubt and the guilt that you have over your mistakes. Um, I, I worry about our kids growing up in this social media age. Every mistake that they make can be broadcast for everybody and it's so hard to live that down. And so my girls know they're not allowed to have social media till they're 16. Um, I have become a very firm believer in our 13-year-olds don't need to be on Instagram or Facebook or anything Snapchat, Twitter, they really need to be kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I can't, I can't imagine if all my mistakes have been broadcast.
Hold on, I'm sure that's gonna happen, we can make that happen, somebody can make that happen, if not, we'll just make it up. Okay, so, so that's awesome, go, go from there then.
So we moved back to North Caroli-, uh, from North Carolina to Garland, actually to the exact same house that we had rented out while we were gone and went to high school in Garland. And so it was a wonderful experience. I lost my aunt, my great aunt, my senior year, right before I graduated from high school and it really impacted my life. Um, I, it shook my faith. I was not prepared for that, um, my faith was not strong enough to know how to deal with that. And so I ended up staying home and not going away to college and I went to community college for two years. It was probably the best thing I could have ever done. Um, I loved the education I got there, I got to meet a variety of people and then I transferred into SMU and finished out my four-year degree and actually got three degrees in four years.
Oh wow, what'd you get?
Political science, public policy and economics.
Wow, wow. I just went to University of Texas, played too much, played too much soccer, played the other side, thought I was the ladies' man, got a C in that, I did not, maybe a D. That was, yeah, stupid me, but, okay, so then college, after college.
College, I, I met Alan, actually my, my husband, my junior year and we dated through college and three months after I graduated, we got married.
Wow.
And he had a year left of law school, so I supported us while he finished law school and then he moved me to North, uh, to College Station for three years and then here to the Woodlands.
Why College Station, work?
Uh, work, yeah, his first job out of law school.
What kind of law does he practice?
He is labor and employment to finish the side.
Okay, okay, cool, cool. I've met him a few times.
He's, he's a pretty good guy, I'll keep him.
Got a different sense of humor, that's what I like, that's what I like, different sense of humor. All right, so then now bring us into, come back to the Woodlands and?
So we've been here 11 years, wow. Um, so we recently moved out of the Woodlands, we're now in Conroe technically, but we, we love it. I had had a bookkeeping business since my junior year of college, just been me and then in 2010, I expanded and started taking on staff, so it's been seven years next month. And we have grown that and in November of 2009, Alan started his own practice. So we are a two entrepreneur family with two kids and I have a team of 18 and he has a team of four.
Well, that's awesome. I went to your website, cuz I mean, I know you and everything like that, but this isn't about just, hey, here's a friend on there, it's.
Right.
That's part of what I want to talk about is the small business side, cuz that's a big thing that I'm a proponent of. The Exons are great, my dad retired 30 years, but that's not the backbone of America.
No, it's not.
It's the one and, it's the mom and pop.
Yes, it is.
It's that one bookkeeper who then hires a part-time admin who then turns into full-time, who then gets somebody to answer the phones, who then, that, that's what it's about.
And that's exactly what happened. Um, I got to a point where I had too much work that I could do and still, um, at the time I wanted to be at home a whole lot, I had a two-year-old and didn't want to put her in daycare full-time, I wanted to have that flexible schedule. So I hired my first person on a part-time basis and it grew from there. By 2012, we were two full-time people and one part-time. And since 2012, it has just taken off exponentially and has been absolutely incredible. Um, we now have a second office in Georgetown. It is that small business and it is taking that leap of faith. It is amazing what you do when you trust God and know that you're leaning on Him to guide it all.
So what made you choose Georgetown?
Uh, one of my wonderful staff members actually was moving there, her husband had worked there for three years while her daughter finished up high school at Oak Ridge and when she graduated, she was gonna move out there. So it was the perfect opportunity, we'd been training her up. Uh, Williamson County is a lot like Montgomery County and a lot.
What's that?
Um, northern suburb of Austin, but the business community is very similar. It is a very close-knit community, you really have to get involved in order to grow your business. Uh, the Georgetown Chamber is a little bit similar, I think, to the Conroe Chamber, it is one that you need to actually be there and connect with people, they're relationship-based, just like everybody here in Montgomery County. It's about forming those bonds with people, it's not about, hey, what can you do for me? It's about, hey, how can we grow together?
So I'm gonna throw something out there and, 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 and if you disagree or whatever and this is not trying to catch you in anything, but that's awesome, that's great and I 100% agree with you, but at what point does it, does it ever turn into a clique though? Can it, can it get that, cuz I'm, I agree with you, here's one thing about the chamber, I've got friends that have joined but I never get anything out of it. Really? You don't go to the, to the mixers, you don't go to the mix and mingle's, you don't go to the classes, well, the class was $30. Really? The class was $30 and if you went to that company's online, they'll do the same thing for you for 150. So you've got an eight-hour seminar for 30 bucks versus they'll come to your office for 150. Hmm, that's a no-brainer. Or just, you know, when you're out and about and you see other chamber members. So I'm a firm believer it's about relationships and I'm a firm believer when you get out and you get involved in the community in nonprofit work.
Very much.
And if I see you sweating next to me or if you're at Challenger and you're, you're crying with that little kid who says, I love you, that's, you know, autistic, Down Syndrome, crippled, I might think about taking you in my bookkeeping business or I might think about calling John the Plumber, cuz I'm like, dude, he's got a heart. Yeah, Eric, I don't have any mineral rights, so I can't come to you to directional drill my milling rights cuz I don't have any, but Eric Estes, great supporter. I wish, I mean.
Yeah, no.
You build that relationship.
One of the frequent complaints that we hear about chambers of commerce in particular is that they are clickish and what you, you find is you get into what you get, you give. So if you're involved, you will get out of it, but it's not a matter to me about getting business. It's a matter of forming those relationships.
And the business will come.
And the business comes from those relationships. If you don't focus on what's best for you, but you focus on what's best for others, in the end, you end up getting what you need.
And here's what's sad in today's, and I don't mean just here locally, I mean, yeah, it's here locally, it's nationwide, it's everywhere, it's probably in other countries, is so many people put on that, that false face. Now, I'll back up cuz we talk about it a lot on my show, I talk about people that are hurting, that have on that mask, everything's great, well, get to know that person because maybe they need you.
Hurting people hurt people.
Absolutely, that's one of the, I've been saying that, Dr. Mac Brunson, First Baptist Church in Jacksonville, I learned it from him. But the other side of that is that, and, and you said it a minute ago, and I know you're for real and I know there's other friends of mine here for real, that love to give God the glory and then they're like, oh God, there's another one. Because there are those.
Yes.
That that's all they do is just, you know, selfie God, picture of so-and-so, but God, 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 and so, but at what point are you praising God, at what point are you using that as a, as a crutch? And I don't know, it's not our job to judge faith.
No, and that's, that's the key, it's not our job to judge where anyone's coming from. Uh, I know what he's brought me through. I know how devastated I was by my aunt's death, I know how much it shook my faith and how I spent two years hearing God say, go right, and I went left because I was mad at Him for taking my aunt away, period. Um, I was not happy and I found that it wasn't about my happiness, it's about being content where He places me. And that's the difference. If I don't focus on where He's leading me, I will screw up and do things out of pride. But if I continue to focus on where He's leading, all of the rest of it's gonna work out.
See, that's strong, that's strong. And, and I mean that because, great mentor of mine, Jim Gentry, and he has busted my chops without ever having to say a negative thing. He just led by example, he said, so, okay, so that's what you did.
Yep.
You know, I love you and I love you anyway. And I'm like, I just told you that I just did something really bad.
Yep.
I just had a thought, you know, I just wasn't the best husband, I definitely wasn't the best, you know, and he just said, I love you anyway. I'm like, and that's all he had to say.
And I've been blessed, I've had two wonderful mentors that have come through my life that have, uh, when I was just coming back into my faith, really poured into me and taught me how to study the Bible and, uh, the, just deep faith really brought that to fruition. And then when Alan and I were in College Station, we had a wonderful couple who mentored both of us in a lot of ways, incredible man of God and then an incredible lady. And unfortunately, James is no longer with us, but Marilyn still is and still I can call her to this day and say, I need to talk, this is what's going on, how do I deal with this? And I screwed up, I did this, or, and she is always there for me. And it's relationships like that that made me desire to be that for someone else. Because when you pour into someone else, you get back so much more.
Wow. Well, thank you for being so, so honest on that because it's a fine line.
It is.
Of, of bearing your soul about your faith, cuz nowadays you're gonna have one side pick you, pick you off and say, oh, isn't that cute, isn't that sweet? And then on the other side, you know, somebody will put you on a pedestal.
Oh, I so don't deserve that.
Right, and so it's gotta be, it's gotta be in the middle.
Right.
And I get it, I, I, I know there's people out there that are so humble and so gracious, somebody puts them on the pedestal like, no, no.
It's not me.
It's not me.
Yeah.
You know, and, and it's hard, it, it is hard sometimes.
I have an amazing husband and I gotta tell you Nathan, Alan keeps me so grounded in that. He is an amazing man of faith that he, he wasn't when we first met, he didn't have that faith, he came to that after we, we met and he had grown up in church, but his faith wasn't like that. And now, everything we do centers around, is God really calling us to do this? Is God really leading us this way and truly spending that time in prayer? And when I talk about CISD, when I first wanted to run for the board, I went to Alan and said, I really wanna do this. And he said, hmm, I don't think so, let's pray about it. And when we prayed about it, he said, no, it's not the time. And I waited and didn't run for two more years because he really felt strongly that it wasn't the time. And he's right. I had a four-year-old at the time that wasn't even in school yet, it wasn't the right time in my life, my business was taking off by leaps and bounds. It turned out, it wasn't the right time.
Yeah.
But looking at it at that moment, I was like, oh, I can do this, because I'm, I'm that type of person, I can do, I can do anything, right? But it wasn't God's time. So then when I went and ran, I knew very clearly, I, I went to Alan, okay, I really would like to do it this time. He's like, yeah, we're good now, let's do it.
And that's good to have that check and balance, sometimes it's our spouses, sometimes it's our brothers, it's our parents, it's just a really close friend, but like you said, it's God ultimately, it's gotta be.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I can see how that would screw up because I know a lot of people on different boards.
Mm-hmm.
And they're terrible board members cuz they're never involved, they gotta be involved.
You gotta watch your, you gotta watch your engagement.
And I have no idea what it's like to be on the CST board, I don't mean so much that, there's, I'm sure everybody's doing a great job.
No, any nonprofit board, any, any volunteer position, you've gotta be on, all in.
Okay, now is it the half hour where we take our couple-minute break, weather, traffic and all that stuff? So here's what I wanna do, when we come back, let's, let's dive in, we kinda leave the bookkeeping side of it, let's dive into CST. Let's kinda really talk as much as we can about that.
Okay.
Cuz I think that's what a lot of people wanna hear about is our kids.
I'd love to talk about that.
Close, Montgomery County Lifestyle, Nathan Arzadi, on Lone Star Community Radio with Melanie Pryor-Bush of Better Bookkeepers and more importantly, CST Board of Trustees. Taking a break, go do whatever you gotta do, we'll be right back.
Our talk shows and music shows are looking for sponsors. Want to expand your brand awareness, reach the hyper-local audience in Montgomery County? Lone Star Community Radio sponsorships accomplish this. Wanna see our stats and rates? Check out IRloneStar.com/sponsor for more information. Or call in and leave us a message at 936-647-3776 with your question. Get seen on TV or YouTube and heard on our podcast, FM and internet radio. Sponsor your local radio station with Lone Star Community Radio.
Man, that boogie woogie is kinda cool, but did y'all hear that last sponsorship promo? Yes, you're listening live jazz, right here on Lone Star Community Radio. Oh my God, every single time she comes on, Eric, don't you agree, is that not insane? Stephanie, I know you're listening, that wasn't your voice, was it? Stephanie, was that your voice? Oh my God, guys, don't y'all think I need to get her to record my promos? I'd probably get twice the listeners, probably have 17 sponsors beating down my door. Man, when's that jazz show that she advertises Jake?
It's Sunday, Sunday evenings.
From when?
Um.
Okay, here's the deal folks, go to Lone Star Community Radio Facebook page, go to IRloneStar.com and find out Sunday when that jazz show is, okay? And just listen, because that promo is insane, okay? I'm gonna listen to it Sunday, okay? Now that I got that off my chest, golly Melanie, that was just something.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, alright guys, I wanna see those ratings, CC Homes, I wanna see those ratings go through the roof for that jazz show.
Oh, sorry, Saturday and Sunday and it's 327, 327.
Okay, now that the engineer got it together. Alright folks, we were talking to Melanie Bush, CISD trustee, we're gonna dive right in, we got a lot to talk about, let's talk about our kids. This is your time, what's going on with the CISD, what's going on in Conroe and the school district?
Uh, so this, this year was a much better year, I think everybody knows 2015 was a very rough year with several suicides and we had a real hard time with that. The theme for this year, Dr. Stockton laid out, was kindness and I think you saw a complete shift in our campuses. One of the things that I loved was their focus on resiliency. Um, what we're, we're seeing in these kids is where they're kinda burning out and, you know, junior year is a tough year, it's the last year right before you put in those college applications, the, the intern over here shaking his head. Um, it, it's really just that rough year and so we really wanted to focus back this past year in 2016 on helping our kids learn those coping mechanisms, building that resiliency. Um, at the elementary level, I loved hearing my kid, um, we were playing a video game the other day and, on the phone, and, um, I just was not getting it. I was not being successful with it at all. And, uh, she said, I said, I give up. I'm, I'm done. And she's like, don't give up, mommy. Keep trying. You just haven't gotten it yet. And that was what they focused on in the elementary level, is, is that you, you may not be able to do it now, but you, you can do it later. You just have to keep working at it and, and learning those, you know, skills. And so, I had a lot of fun texting my daughter's principal and teachers and telling her that, you know, she, she got it. Um, you know, I need to not give up on the iPhone apps.
Well, and it's interesting you say that, because I don't have a lot of interaction with the other C I S D schools, and I'd, and I'd like to, but I did it Washington because I'm, I'm so happy that, that I get to be one of the project mentors, mentors. And then into the ninth grade campus. So I got to meet and spend a lot of time with, with Gorka-
Gorka, Brian Gorka.
And then Brandy Painter in the front office is a hoot. And then I really got to know Dr. Weatherly-
Mm-hmm.
-and Terry Benson. I, I just gotta tell you, oh, my God. Weatherly, Mark, I love you, bro, but guess what? Terry Benson, Dr. Terry Benson is by far my favorite of all favorites of all favorites, and I'm not afraid to say it. I love her, I love the way she and Dr. Weatherly and everybody else interact with those kids. And it's real. And you watch the kids interact back, and it's real. But they hold them accountable. It's not just fun and games. But they lead by example, and I know that that's through all the schools-
It is.
-that you guys try to do.
It is, and that, and that's what I love about C I S D. Uh, my husband and I moved in February into our, our new house, and we're still in the same feeder zone that we were in previously, but, you know, out a little further. And when we were going to look for where we're gonna move, I told Alan, I'm like, you have three hundred and forty-eight square miles. I said, I don't care where in C I S D you go, because the quality of education will be the same, no matter what. And our staff are all incredible. I said, so you can take us to any elementary school, any intermediate, anywhere, but we're staying in C I S D.
Now, you said that, and Michelle Bischoff might be listening.
I know, and I love Michelle. She knows that.
What about Kristy Baker over at Magnolia?
Well, yes.
Because they're coming on the show too.
Good.
But they're gonna put a hit on ya.
But, but I'm, I'm a C I S D girl. They're, they're Willis and Magnolia, and, and they'll say the same things about their district. We all support each other. The main thing is focusing on our kids.
Exactly.
And that we all are doing right by our kids, every district. No.
So, yeah, the bullying thing, I know, is a big deal.
Yes. So we, we are opening a new elementary campus this fall, uh, Lucille Bradley in Oak Ridge area. And then, uh, next year, we are actually opening the new high school in fall of two thousand eighteen, Grand Oaks. And then we are also opening a new intermediate school over in that feeder zone as well. So that has been our focus, the renovations for Conroe. Speaking of Conroe High-
Yep.
-um, if you've been by-
I drive by every day, and I see that going on.
You'll, you'll see that we are beginning those renovations. That was a sixty-million-dollar project, uh, to start renovating.
What's the main focus on that?
Um-
I know you're moving the front from one oh five to there, but why? What, what's all going on?
Well, that's, that's at Austin, we're moving the front.
I thought Conroe High was moving the front.
Mm-mm.
Okay.
No, right now, what we're doing is, uh, we, we did away with Wilson Road right there, and we're gonna actually reroute it so that we can have the campus be, you know, continuous and not have to walk across the street in the rain and all that. So right now, we're focused on underground utilities, then they're gonna work on getting the new student addition built, so that we can move the students into that while we work on the underground. Um, Conroe High, oldest campus in the district, you know, high school, and the, the plumbing is, is, you know, gonna start to have some problems. It's kind of, you know, run out its useful life. So we're revamping, uh, all of that and fixing issues there. So in order to do that, though, we have to build the new student addition to move the kids into. You can't work underneath the, uh, floor and have the kids walking over top.
Right.
That, that won't work for a while. So we're working on that.
Okay. Um, you just had, well, I'm gonna back up when you said that, all those schools, because I've got a friend, Chantel Hilton. I don't know what she does with the bus system, but she's like some kind of supervisor person, and she loves it. She said it's the best job she's ever had. She loves it because the kids are her kids, so to speak. As a bus driver, you've got incredible bus drivers.
Incredible need as well, though.
But you've got an incredible need, and that's what I wanna talk about. So let's hit it now, because people listening, share this, spread the word. Go to the Facebook page, go to C I S D website. There's a huge need for bus drivers.
That's statewide. There's a huge need for bus drivers. Um, I'm sure Kristy and Michelle experienced the same thing. C I S D being as large as we are geographically, we drive over forty thousand miles a day on our buses. Um-
God!
Yeah, that's a staggering number. Um, so we do need more buses, uh, more bus drivers specifically. We have our mechanics that work on our buses that also have their license to drive the bus, that they're picking up shifts. Um, it is a flexible job, because you work in the morning for a few hours, and then you work in the afternoon for a few hours. So it's ideal for someone who has that flexibility. Starting pay, we just up to sixteen dollars an hour for a bus driver. Um, and that's, that's great. That's phenomenal to be able to get sixteen. Um, you are the first face that these kids see, and-
And the last face of the day.
You don't know what they're coming from-
Yep.
-or what they're going home to. And so, you can set the tone with a smile and a friendly, how are you today? That this kid would never have otherwise. There may not be someone that is seeing them off to the bus. There may not be someone there that is encouraging. And our bus drivers make all the difference in the world. They love these kids so much.
And it's so cool to hear you, and, and bear with me, in your supposed ivory tower-
Oh, oh, please.
No, 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 you're not saying that, but a lot of people wanna say that that school board doesn't know. You are almost word for word what my friend Chantel talked about.
And, and I don't think I've met Chantel. I might have. There's, there's seven thousand employees I have.
At a garage sale that we had last year, a lady came up, and she said she saw the sign Friday, because she's a bus driver, and she said the same exact thing, but it makes sense. You are the first face and voice of the day, and you're the last voice and face. Folks, come on, man. Don't shortchange that. That's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
That's a big responsibility.
Well, and I'll give you a story of one of our bus drivers. We had a wonderful, um, female supervisor over in the College Park feeder zone, and there was an issue with, um, someone in the, uh, Woodlands Church parking lot that had broken into a car and gotten a gun out of the car. And while they locked down College Park, uh, to get all the students safe and all that, she didn't go running in, you know, she made sure all of her bus drivers went in, and all of them were safe. But then she went to help and to stop this person. And that's an incredible person. Someone that is willing, now, we told her not to do that again, um, but someone, someone that is willing to help out the police and put their lives on the line for, to protect our children.
Yeah.
That's amazing. And I could tell you so many more stories of kids, you know, that have had bus drivers drastically impact their lives, um, through saving them with medical issues to just being that face. Um, every person that comes in contact with our kids makes a difference. And if you don't believe that, step foot on a campus. Go pick up a book and read to a group of second graders, and you will see-
Oh, man, yeah.
You will see what a difference you make in that one kid that you don't think is listening, can't sit still, because they, you know, just are like that. They don't wanna really pay attention, but they're hearing everything you say, regardless of whether they're sitting still. They, they get it. And to have a kid run up to you and give you a hug and say that's the best story they've ever heard, makes all the difference in the world. Um, one of the things that I did when I first got on the board, when we, we get sworn in, it's November. Um, C I S D does school tours. Every, uh, month, we take a Friday half-day and we go and tour all the campuses. Uh, I went back, they had already toured nineteen campuses in, uh, by November of fourteen, when I got elected. I went back and toured all those nineteen campuses. It was important to me, we were headed into a bond, uh, for fifteen. It was important to me that I had gone to every single campus. In addition, over summer, a lot of what we were doing with the bond was talking about improvements to those auxiliary facilities, our bus barn, maintenance, and all that. I went back and asked Dr. Stockton to take me and tour me, uh, with all those facilities. So I got to go to the Jet Center that we do a lot of training at, that a lot of people don't even know really is there-
Mm-hmm.
-and see that. I went and saw, you know, the bus barn and the maintenance facilities that needed upgrades and needed certain things to happen in order to continue to serve our kids. And that's what I love. Our board is completely focused-
Yep.
-on serving the kids. We have amazing administration that are focused on the kids.
I went to school with Scott Kidd.
Okay, so-
He was the jargon, I wasn't, yeah.
You know, you know one of our wonderful, and then, of course, John Husbands is a Conroe Tiger alumni, and then so is Scott Moore, our most recent board-
Yep.
-um, member. He has, uh, been a wonderful addition to the team, that we've got a great group of guys and me.
So let's do this. We're gonna take a short little break.
Okay.
When we come back, let's stay with C I S D, and let's talk about teacher raises just came up.
Yes.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, budget.
Yes, we are working on that.
It's a hot topic.
Yes.
We're gonna throw you under the bus.
Okay.
On budget. Folks, listen to Montgomery County Lifestyle, Nathan Erzadi, Melanie Bush of C I S D. You're listening to Lone Star Community Radio, your community radio station. We'll be right back.
Lone Star Community Radio is looking for those who are interested in hosting their own talk show, with monthly and weekly slots available on Conroe's FM one oh four point five, one oh six point one, and on irlonestar.com. Start your own podcast, create your first YouTube channel, and be on TV. Contact Lone Star Community Radio online at irlonestar.com, or call the station message line at nine three six six four seven three seven seven six to take your first step into the radio world.
Good morning, good morning. Dick Schisler, Dick Schisler, on the highway, on the highway. All right, folks, Nathan Erzadi, Montgomery County Lifestyle. I still don't like that name. I just, I gotta just go to Montgomery County Lifestyle Talk, Montgomery County Lifestyle Radio TV. I don't know. Anyway, we'll figure it out. Dick Schisler, on the street, walking around, he's out there. Folks, if you get a chance, swing by the radio station right now, find Dick, give him a hug. He needs a hug. He really needs a hug. He's outside, sitting by himself, and especially if you're a pretty young lady. Now, he's got a girlfriend. He's got a girlfriend, so you can't go there, but he needs a hug. Sarah, come over and give him a hug. She's listening over at Cal Town Couture. So let's dive back in. Let's talk about teacher, teacher raises-
Yes.
-and then let's get into the budget. That's kind of a hot topic. We could probably talk another hour, but we don't have that much time.
We probably could. I, I, I won't bore you with all the details. Uh, numbers are, obviously, with, uh, being a bookkeeper, numbers are my thing. Um, teacher raises, we just approved a two percent across-the-board raise for all teachers, and then for the paraprofessional staff, a three percent raise. We are trying our best. Uh, we do not know what our budget is going to look like from the state at this point. That is one of the items for special sessions. So we are blessed that our fiscal year doesn't start until September. Uh, some of our other districts around have a July first fiscal year, and so they have had to already approve a budget, not knowing what the state's gonna do. Thankfully, they can amend that, but it's, it's a challenging time for districts right now. And so much of what we do is dependent upon the state, and a lot of people don't realize how much. Um, our funding has gone down every year from the state, and so we're having to use more of our tax dollars and, in order to pay for all that. It's what they call the Robin Hood effect, so the recapture system. As our property continues to become more valuable, they continue to take a little bit more of our property taxes. Um, at this point in time, we are looking at a, I have my notes, I have to get my notes out.
Sure.
This is, this is a big deal. Um, we are one of the only, one of three ISDs to receive a five-star rating for Texas Smart Schools.
Wow.
Um, we have for seven consecutive years. So we are one of the top in fiscal transparency. We received three transparency stars from the state. And then, uh, we are still in the one-one box E R G, if anybody is, uh, looking at that. That's one of our other ratings on how we're doing with being fiscally responsible, but with high academic standards. And so that's what they're looking at.
Because you might be fiscally responsible, because you're cutting every corner you can, and you're, you're, you know-
Yes.
But you're not providing anything.
Not providing anything for the students. I mean, when we had the big budget cuts back in two thousand, uh, nine session for two thousand ten, C I S D didn't cut any fine arts. You know, that was one of the things that they refused to do, whereas a lot of districts that are not in the same position, uh, especially down in the valley, cut all fine arts-
Yep.
-completely, because they had to. They didn't have the money. Um, right now, we are not looking at a tax rate increase. Um, we are looking to hold steady at one point two eight. Spring I S D just approved their new budget and went up four cents on their tax rate to one point five one. So we are lower than our average peer group by about nineteen cents on average, and that's, that's huge. We try really hard to keep the tax rate as low as we can, but to still do what we need to do for the kids. Um, the teacher raises were very, very important to us. The other thing that's very important is when we can to pay for capital projects, to pay for schools out of cash. Um, we try to avoid taking on unnecessary debt. And so, we have, uh, Bonnie Wilkinson Elementary, we paid for completely out of cash. Um, lifecycle in Oak Ridge ninth grade campus upgrades, we did all out of cash. Um, the new locker rooms at the Woodlands High School, all out of cash. So we're trying to do as much as we can out of that cash rather than taking on debt, because if your debt gets too high, then you gotta raise that tax rate to compensate for it, and that's not what we wanna do. Um, what we're looking at with budget, overall, what our budget's gonna end up being, probably what we're leaning towards and what we're looking at was, oh, I'm sorry, I'm fluffing through my papers here, a total of-
That's why they call bookkeepers and account as paper shufflers.
We are paper shufflers. Um, four that, four hundred and seventy-three million, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
And what that does is it does give those teacher raises, it counts for student growth. Um, we've been growing an average of a little over fifteen hundred students. Um, with the state funding, yet again, this is a detail that a lot of people don't know, they pay us a year kinda in the rears. They look at what our A V, what our growth in students were back in two thousand fifteen,